And I will call the Mandan Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November 24th. To order, roll call please.
Commissioner Langen. Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Mutter.
Here.
Commissioner Horn. He is online, but.
Okay.
Mayor Freilich.
Here.
Commissioner Infeld. Commissioner McLean.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Hammond.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Here.
Commissioner Renner.
Here.
Chair Robinson.
Here.
Next item, we have the minutes from our October 27th meeting. Are there any changes?
Mr. Chairman, just one real quick change on page 12. Where it says Commissioner Action and then I made a motion. On the third line, I think it should read with the understanding that between the preliminary plat phase and the final plat phase. That's the only change I have.
This is about mid-page here?
Yeah, where it says Commissioner Action. Commission Action and then Commissioner Smith move to approve.
Okay.
The third line. With the understanding that between the preliminary plat phase and the final plat
Changes noted. Got it Nancy? Any other changes?
Move.
Other changes? Do we have a motion?
Move approval with the changes.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Hammond to approve the minutes of October 27th with the noted changes. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Huber.
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter.
Yes.
Commissioner Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes.
Commissioner Infeld.
Yes.
Commissioner McLean.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Renner.
Yes.
Chair Robinson.
Yes. Motion is passed. We'll move on to our public hearings. First public hearing is to consider a zone change from RM and agricultural to RM residential in a minor plat for Big Sky Estates 8th Edition. Rachel.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. This is a request. Let me try to get to the location map. This is a request for a zone change from RM residential and agricultural to RM residential and a minor plat to be named the Big Sky Estates 8th Edition. It is in lots 12 and 13, block 4, Big Sky Estates 3rd Edition in the southwest quarter, section 16, Township 139 North, Range 81 West, City of Mandan. It was submitted on behalf of Shorestone Solutions LLC. And the intent is to replat, you can kind of see these two lots here, plus this vacated right-of-way into one large lot. The property itself is located at the southeast corner of Viewpoint Lane. And the right-of-way was referred to as Hillside Road in previous surveys between Jew Lane Northwest and 31st Street Northwest. The right-of-way, the area included in the plat was previously rezoned from R7 to RM in 2014. And then the right-of-way that is included in the plat was granted to Shorestone Solutions LLC via judgment on October 1st, 2025. And so we do have that document number in the packet for you. So the new lot is 1.2 acres. And it contains an existing electric easement belonging to MGS Electric that runs through the plat. And it is to be vacated via this plat. The zone change is just for that right-of-way area. So from Ag to RM. And then there are additional 10-foot utility easements along the north and west sides of the plat. There are no additional items of significance with this. The right-of-way that is being removed here, that's been removed, is unlikely to be necessary. There are multifamily developments to the south and properties to the east that are currently zoned RM. So there shouldn't be any other additional significance to that change. And then the finding of facts for the minor plat are in your packet. And so the recommendation is to approve the minor plat and zone change request as presented.
Rachel, nice seeing you. I was looking at, it's page 18. The subdivision is not located in special flood zone area, but there's a kind of a goofy hill in there. And I'm just going to double-check. Do we have to worry about mudslides or anything in that back of that area? I watch maybe too much news, but every once in a while you hear about mudslides. And so I'm kind of, that's what I was a little bit concerned about is, is that hill pretty
Commissioner Mutter, I'll take that one. This is Jordan. I do believe this plat also coincides with a future project that is going to happen. And I believe that all of that will be taken care of, if there are any. So retaining laws, et cetera. So.
Thank you, Jordan. Any other questions? With none from the commission at this time, I'll open up for public comments or questions on item number one. Yes, sir.
Yep. I'll have you come up and state your name for the record.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Devon Helm. My wife Jenny and I live at 2710 Old Red Trail, which is at the top of that hill. We were unaware that that right-of-way was granted to Shorestone. We never got a notification about that. That's news to us tonight. Before when I talked to, so I talked to Andrew at the city about, almost two years ago. And we were told that we have access from that right-of-way area to the corner of our property, which would be to the west there or whatever. Because I asked him about putting another building on our property. And he said we could put another 1,500 square foot structure on there. And so he told me that we were able to, if in the future, we were able to access our property from that road. And that was before the road was even built. So I wish we would have known that that got granted to them because we weren't informed of that decision. And we showed up here May of '23. And Shorestone was a no-show that day. So nothing, nothing happened that night. We showed up and they didn't. So I guess we're just unaware of this now. It's all new. So I don't know where we go from there. I don't, are we going to have access to our lot down there anymore?
Jordan, Rachel. Comment on that?
Can I, I can maybe speak a little bit to this. Maybe just more asking questions. So I'm the realtor that has a few of those lots listed at the bottom of the hill, not the ones that Shorestone has. But we had closed a couple of properties back there. And after a few of the closings, the second or third closings, the title company actually found this right-of-way back there. They didn't find it on the first one. And then the second time, they closed at another property. So I'm guessing that's what you're talking about. And is that, is that right-of-way back there? I don't know the correct word for alley right-of-way or easement or whatever.
Yeah, easement, yeah. I don't, no, well, he called it no man's land too because it wasn't really labeled as anything. But yeah, we, we were unaware that they were granted that.
But I'm guessing that if there's been a judgment and it's been settled, I mean, it seems like it's out of our hands, like as far as the commission in terms of just zoning it differently. It sounds like it's, it sounds like there wouldn't be any, I'm not sure what we could do.
Well, seeing that, I wasn't sure with the, with it being a zoning thing, I wasn't sure if that was going to change our access. Because we never got a letter saying that that was going to be given to them, you know? And so it's just kind of, it now, now, you know, I mow down there. So now technically, I mean, how can I mow down there? I have no access to it. I mean, other than crossing that property, I mean.
I'm guessing for the judgment they sent out, they put something in the newspaper, which everyone reads daily, which seems like not a great system. But I don't know how else the judgments happen. But that's, I don't know, I don't.
So we wouldn't, like, because we never got a letter for it, like we did for this and for the last one. So I don't understand why it gets just given to them without.
I'm thinking the judgment process is, I think they put it in the newspaper, is that correct? Instead of like, whereas the commission, they send out letters, like the zoning, you know, Nancy or whoever sends letters out when the city does it. But I think during the judgment process, I think that's a different, which is probably the more important one for you.
So what you're saying is we just lost access to.
I'm not a lawyer, but.
I talked to Andrew about it and I, you know, in the future, a guy could have made two lots out of there with one apron. And now we're just, you know.
I think that's the work of the judicial system, not, not the commission is what I'm.
But well, I just found out about that right now. So that's.
I didn't, yeah.
You know, I'm not, it's news to me.
When I heard it, it surprised me too, when I heard that.
Yeah, I think it's ridiculous that a guy doesn't even know about it, you know? Especially when your property is bordering, you know, you just lost out on everything, basically. But anyway, I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Rachel.
So Jordan and I are looking at this right now. And I am wondering if maybe we should clarify what the particular right-of-way is that was provided judgment. I'm going to pull up that location map if that's okay.
Good evening, Commission. Mark Isaacs with Independent Land Surveying and Engineering. So to start out the conversation, I've done survey work and research on this area for several years. There's been title search work done on it. And what was found is this is not a right-of-way. It was never a right-of-way. It was shown on the GIS map for the city as Hillside Road, but it was created on a plat of irregular description, which is just an auditor's lot. And so it was not officially platted as a right-of-way. So Shorestone Solution hired an attorney to look into it. They did research. Then they did investigation and went back to, tried to go back to the original grantor of the property. So the original grantor of the property would come up to, it's 7Cs Edition, which is, on your map, it would be the south line of this plat. So in looking for their, those heirs, they could not do that. So then they entered into a quiet title suit, which involved notifications of the original grantors and their heirs. And so through that whole process came the judgment to award that property to Shorestone Solutions. So I think the misnomer has been for years is, you know, nobody, including the city, knew what to do with that strip because it was never officially platted as part of subdivision or a right-of-way. So it's just been a leftover piece of land. So this was Shorestone's conclusion to include that into their property and to clean that up. So I can answer any questions. I think that covers everything.
Questions for Mark. Anyone else? Comments or questions on item number one? I'll offer one more time, comments or questions on item number one. With none, I'll close and return, return it back to the commission.
Rachel, this is Tanner. Was, does that kind of coincide with what was described, what you were going to say?
Yes, I think so. We hadn't gotten those full details, I don't believe. But it does match what is shown on the plat map and what's shown here and on the subdivision map for the city. I wonder, I'm wondering if there's not a communication issue with the gentleman who had concerns about access. And we can certainly try to clarify kind of what he was using as access versus what we're talking about in this plat. Because it, I, it isn't part of this plating process, right? That, that right-of-way has already been provided to the owner. So this plating process is simply to combine all of it into one lot, but it's all held by Shorestone LLC, or Shorestone Solutions LLC right now. And then the zone change itself is to simply make the whole lot the same zoning.
That was my question. Because obviously there has to be documentation with all the work that had been into it. So that was, you answered it, thanks.
So you're comfortable, Rachel, then you guys, and Jordan? I know you guys were.
If the commission would like us to, we can certainly work with Mark to review all of that title work. I would assume he has appropriately done his title work. But if you would like us to, we can certainly work with him.
No, I just wanted, yeah, okay, thanks. Any other questions from the commission?
Well, Mr. Chairman, given the prior discussion here, and I think the quiet title judgment resolves what, what issues we were talking about, I would move to recommend approval of the plat and zone change.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Infeld. Motion is to recommend approval of the minor plat and zone change as presented. And are there any questions? None, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Huber.
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter.
Yes.
Commissioner Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes.
Commissioner Infeld.
Yes.
Commissioner McLean.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Renner.
Yes.
Chair Robinson.
Yes. Motion is passed. Item number two, public hearings, is to consider a final plat for Evergreen Heights 5th Edition. Rachel.
Commissioner, Chair. I know that the memo that you got did not quite have an answer for you on this one. So we did have a meeting today. I am prepared to kind of explain the whole plan here. So this is a final plat for Evergreen Heights 5th Edition. I will start by noting that staff is comfortable with this as a final plat. The preliminary plat was approved at the August 25th meeting with several requirements regarding the vacation of Living Water Drive. I'm going to pull up the new plat and use this one. So the original conditions were based off of this area of Living Water Drive, which is going north from 19th. This piece of Living Water Drive, through the vacation process, would need to go to the property owned by Living Water Church, which was not part of this plat. So there is now a separate vacation process for the section of Living Water Drive south of this point, which is where the Living Water Church property ends on the north side. So everything south of here of Living Water Drive is in a separate vacation process that will be heard on Tuesday night at City Commission. So the plat is a replat of the existing lots 2 through 6 of the Evergreen Heights 2nd Edition and of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Evergreen Heights 4th Edition in the southwest quarter of Section 35, Township 139 North, Range 81 West, City of Mandan. So if you'll recall, the existing residential lot owners over here are purchasing the land directly behind their property, as well as vacating the Living Water Drive right-of-way and 16th Avenue Southeast, or 16th Street Southeast. The total area of this plat is 4.43 acres, with the new proposed lots ranging from 45,126 square feet to 24,070 square feet. All lots are zoned R7. The access to the existing lots is not changing. They will maintain their access from 14th Streets, or 14th Avenue Southeast. Properties to the east will maintain their access as existing. There is still a no-access line shown here, along the eastern edge of, the eastern and northern edges of the vacated right-of-way. Proposed Lot 6, down here at the bottom, will take access from 19th Street Southeast. The question that has been of note through this process has been how to vacate Living Water Drive and 16th Street Southeast. The first plat showed an odd lot ending up here. The second plat had concerns over the plating of this piece of Living Water Drive. So as we've noted, we've solved the issue of access and, or vacation from the north line of the Living Water Church property south. The property owners on both sides had come to the city requesting to make a change from their preliminary plat, which is kind of what's laid out in your packet on page 26. Since the preliminary plat, which showed all of this right-of-way being vacated and being absorbed into new lots 1, 2, and 3, the applicant has requested that instead, the east 33 feet of Living Water Drive and the north 33 feet of 16th Street Southeast, instead go to the properties to the north and to the east. And then everything to the south and east would go to residential lots 1, 2, and 3. We had a meeting today with the recorder's office, and the engineer did update the plat. So I'm going to zoom in really far here. Move that so you can see it a little better. So we did ask for clarifying notes here, noting where these streets were being vacated to. You can vacate as part of the plat process. This is essentially what would occur if we were to go through the separate vacation process, where 33 feet would go to one side and 33 feet would go to the other side. This is simply laying it out within the plat boundaries that were assigned during the preliminary plat stage. So staff from engineering, planning, recorder, building, we have reviewed this and are comfortable with it and the legality of it. All owners are on board with this. And this does allow them to keep to their original timeline, which includes taking this final plat to City Commission on Tuesday night, when the vacation of the south portion of Living Water Drive is at City Commission. I recognize this is extremely complicated for a final plat, and I wish I could have had it in writing for you. The recommendation at this point from staff would be to recommend approval of this final plat of Evergreen Heights 5th Edition as presented and shown. And I can answer any questions.
Questions for Rachel.
I just have, Rachel, if, it is complicated. If you could, is there anything that's, that you see as potential, potentially problematic or anything negative to consider? I know that you're recommending approval. I just was curious if there's anything that, that might be on the edge of consideration.
Chair Commissioners, no. When we've talked about this, a lot of the concern has been around the access to the Renner properties to the north and to the east, given that they have more commercial uses on them. The no-access line is maintained. All of the city easements that are required are maintained. All of the lots have a 20-foot access easement, the residential lots have a 20-foot access easement along that right-of-way, that previous right-of-way. The old right-of-way is now shown on the plat, so it's very clear that half went to one side and half went to the other. And it is very clear on each lot, kind of what sections of what roads are being vacated to what properties. I think it should clear it up for the future when someone gets inevitably very confused by this, right? Otherwise, I don't believe that staff had any remaining concerns, other than that this final plat does need to be contingent on that full vacation of the full Living Water Drive. Because our concern has always been that there would be one small remaining piece of right-of-way, or that it would be partially vacated, or that there would just be a piece left hanging. So this should theoretically remove the entirety of Living Water Drive, but it is definitely a timing issue. I think that's probably our one remaining real concern.
Chair Robinson, Rachel. So just for clarification, where Living Water Drive, right now, they are going to be vacating that 33 feet also? And then that becomes, that will become part of their property then?
Chair Commissioners, yes. So the reason that the vacation is for the entirety of Living Water Drive, all 66 feet south of the, starts like 30, 29.44 feet south of the north line of Lot 3. The reason that the entirety of that 66 feet is being vacated through a separate process is because the century code doesn't recognize widths. It just says, if you're vacating your road, half goes to one side and half goes to the other. So they're vacating that full right-of-way in a separate process.
Any other questions?
Rachel, since we're talking about Living Water Drive, is there any thought process on building one further that way over? On the drive, further east, I guess would be? As far as an easement?
Commissioner Mutter, they actually take, the church takes access off of 19th Street now. So that has been part of the conversation with Jordan about what their address will be. It's something that's kind of been in the queue for changing their address because they're addressed off of a street that doesn't exist.
Thank you. Any other questions? With none at this time, I will open it up for public comments or questions. Take questions or comments on item number two.
Chair Commissioners, Greg Fazer with Fazer Engineering, represent, excuse me, representing Val Renner, the owner of that. And as you guys are aware, we've been kind of through quite a few different steps in trying to get this all worked out, and a lot of complexities. And at this point, we've gotten to a good point with the buyers and the sellers, Val, to where everyone's in agreement. We've been able to, you know, meet all the. to where everyone's in agreement. We've been able to meet all the issues and concerns that the city has had, and I think we're in a good spot at this point. So if there's any questions, feel free.
Questions? Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair Robinson, Commissioners, my name is Ben Kaple. I represent the buyers, and I am a purchaser. I just want to come up and say thank you for your time. I feel like this is a thankless job, coming up here and having to listen to people that seem like they're probably more angry than anything. So thanks for what you do and continuing to serve on this board. I just wanted to come up and, I did want to mention the time constraints. You know, it's like dominoes. You try to keep everybody going in the same direction, and they're like cats, you know. So we did have some people that didn't want to extend this deal. It's been going on long enough. So that was kind of the push. Either it happens and we move it forward, or that's it, and we got a, you know, a few dominoes fall and we got to scratch the whole thing. So my hope is, is that you push this forward, so then we can go into City Commission and get this wrapped up by the end of the year. Any questions for me?
What are you going to do when you don't have to come to Planning and Zoning Meeting next month?
I might just come for the entertainment.
All right, just checking.
Okay, thank you again.
Anyone else? Item number two. With none, I'll close and return it back to the commission.
Chair Robinson, I can move to approve final plat as Evergreen Heights Fifth Edition final plat.
And I can second that. Motion by Commissioner McLean, second by Commissioner Gardner. Motion is to approve the plat, final plat for Evergreen Heights Fifth Edition as presented. Questions? None? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn? Commissioner Horn? Commissioner Horn? Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Infeld?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Renner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. And motion is passed. Next item, we move on to other business, and we have appointments to the board.
Good evening, Chair Robinson, Commissioners. As you know, it's that time of year where you go down to Dyke Shore and Park, take your family, and get some photos. After today, it should be a lovely time. It's also that time of year for expiring terms for this board. We have two at-large terms expiring December 31 of this year. One of those terms is by Chair Robinson and the other by Commissioner Gardner. They have both expressed, or you have both expressed interest in serving another term. We also have candidates who have also expressed interest, and I would just suggest going through, and Chair Robinson and I talked about this, give each of the candidates a chance to speak. And I would suggest we go in order of the ones that we have. So Joe Camisa, Jordan Schneider, Will Gardner, and then Chair Robinson. So at this time, I guess I'll open it to the board to decide how you want to do that. At the end, if you would either take two motions or a combined motion, either one will work, to the City Commission for approval. And then the starting term would begin January 1, 2026, and end December 31, 2030. So with that, I'll open it up to you guys to figure this out.
Well, presently, a couple of us are serving, so I will start with the interested parties. First email in our packet is Mr. Camisa. If you want to step up and say a few words.
Good evening, Chair Robinson, Mayor Freilich, Commissioners. Most of you probably know who I am. Been around the city for a few days, or 10 years now. Amazing how time flies. In my 10 years of living here in Mandan, my wife is a native to Mandan, I have somehow been in public service of the community for about nine and a half of those years. Started out with code enforcement, worked through various boards and committees, including the Weed Control Board, chaired that, served a term on the Planning and Zoning Commission, which my term expired during my time on the City Commission. Felt it was best at that time to come off of planning and zoning, being a sitting commissioner. And my term on the City Commission had come to an end last year. So I took a little bit of time off, thought, let's see what the next great adventure would be. And I think of the city commissions and boards, this is a place that I found the most interest and believe that my skills are the most valuable to the city. So in addition to my time on Planning and Zoning and City Commission, I was Vice President of the City Commission for two years, also had the Planning and Zoning portfolio as well. Before joining Bismarck State College, where I've been employed currently for the last four years, I was a land title examiner. So I worked with a local title company, had my licenses in four different states. I still currently hold my insurance producer's license in land title. Don't use it, but I still keep it current. So I do have experiences, about six, seven years of direct employment experience, working with the technical aspects of plats and surveys, and examining real estate title transfer. We talked about quiet title. I was usually the one involved in the middle of that for a lot of customers that came to us for land title examination, with my specialty being in commercial properties. So we got the most technical of the technical. So I would like an opportunity to come back, if that is your wishes, and believe that this is the only board that has the best use of my skills and the only one I applied to. So thank you very much. Chair Robinson, Commissioners, I'll stand for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in the packet is Mr. Schneider.
Hello, how's everybody doing? So I'm Jordan Schneider. I'm currently working with the state right now in the Oil and Gas Division for pipelines. So I have about five, six years of pipelines experience. Previously worked with the city of Nacogdoches in Texas. So I'm pretty well versed as far as the city and everything going on. So I'm really just excited about throwing my name out there. You know, they said to apply, and so I did. And so now I am here. So good day to everybody.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? I know Commissioner Gardner has echoed. Anything to add to the time that you served?
No, I just, I appreciate the opportunity to serve and to serve with everyone here. I've actually learned quite a bit. It's just amazing how much you don't know until you get involved in something. And I know Joe, and it's good to meet the new candidate, and Bill. I mean, they're all, I don't, I'm glad, I'm not on your guys' side having to vote. No, but I just love the energy that God's given me to do this, and I'm interested if called upon. I love to serve, and I love to be here. And, you know, I think it's important to attend. And so I've just been happy that I've been able to attend as frequently as I can, and I'll commit to keep doing that.
Thank you. And then I guess for myself, I don't know how long I've been on this commission. 30-plus? 40? Not quite 40, I don't think, yeah. So I've seen a lot of plats come and go and get changed. So I've seen a lot. I don't know how long I've chaired either. The only thing to say about chairing, it's, the worst meeting I've ever attended was chaired by me. So I learned a lot, tremendous amount of lessons in that particular meeting. But beyond that, I enjoy it. To echo Commissioner Gardner, serving on this board, you do learn a lot of what's going on in Mandan.
You clearly weren't at the meeting where I chaired for you, in your absence then. That was the worst one.
No, I don't think it could have been worse. It was a stick of dynamite.
Is it, is it not turned over to us, then?
It's turned over to the commission.
Okay. I don't know. I guess my preference is probably to do it by separate motion. My first motion would be, we move that the City Commission appoint Bill Robinson to an additional term.
The motion is to recommend Bill Robinson to serve on Mandan Planning and Zoning Commission? Any questions? Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner McLean. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn? Mayor Freilich? Commissioner Infeld? Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Renner?
And motion is passed. Second position, yes.
Chair Robinson, I move that we forward Will Gardner's name for the commission to serve another term.
I'll second.
Motion is to forward Will Gardner to serve on Mandan Planning and Zone Commission for 2026. Motion by Commissioner McLean, second by Commissioner Infeld. Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Chairman Robinson, if I might just maybe make a comment, I think it just, you know, this is an incredibly good problem to have this level of interest and engagement. And I think we have four really qualified candidates here, and I just want to comment that I voted yes on the earlier motion, because we are at a point where we're looking at bringing in updates to the whole Planning and Zoning code. And so I think that Bill Robinson's experience is going to bode well in that. And for that same reason, I think that Will has only served one term, if I'm not mistaken. And so I think, again, that that experience with all of the things before us will bode well. But I just really want to extend a sincere appreciation to both of the other two applicants, and hope that you'll remain engaged in moving this community forward. And certainly, there will be other opportunities for this commission and as well as other boards and committees in the city.
Well said.
I would agree with that. You know, obviously, I served a long time. So some of these terms don't go all the way through for various personal reasons, that people have to move off to the, move off the commission for some reason. So I agree, keep your hat in the ring, and something will happen. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn? Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Infeld?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Renner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. Motion is passed. Anything else? With nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, signed by Bessie and I.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.